2019 Regular Meeting of the Littleton Planning Commission. Can we please have the roll call?
Chair Rudnicki.
Here.
Vice Chair Swatchmark Becker.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Stallman.
Here.
Commissioner Bolt.
Here.
Commissioner Allman.
Here.
And Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Since we only have one item, I assume nobody's going to complain. Okay, thank you. The agenda is set. Next up is the minutes to be approved. Certification of the October 28, 2019 Regular Meeting Minutes. We do have some corrections here.
So I saw one correction needed. It is under the First Amendment to the main motion. It starts out correctly where Chair Rudnicki moved and Commissioner Schnallman seconded. But when you get down to, it looks like just the second sentence where it says vote on the Second Amendment to the main motion. And this is the First Amendment. And it also shows that this failed, but it passed.
Everybody catch that?
Okay.
All right, any other corrections? Entertain a motion? Motion, ma'am?
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the 28 October 2019 minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
We have a second?
As amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's cool.
So point of order here. Commissioner Coronado showed up two minutes late. Do we, does he stay down in the pit or does he come up?
Public shaving. Public shaving.
He can come up if he would like.
We'll go ahead and switch.
Yeah, come on.
We hear you were basking somewhere, so we thought you'd still be on a beach.
Oh, tan.
Give you a second here. I was going to commend everybody for being on time regularly, so. Next up is public comment. This is a chance for the public to speak on issues that are not on tonight's official public hearing agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak. Come up, please give your name, your district, or your address. When you have 30 seconds left, well, there's a timer there, but when you have 30 seconds left, a yellow card will be held up. When your three minutes are up, then your time is up. We ask that discourse be civil. We have one person that's signed up, Pam Chadburn.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chadburn, and I live a block and a half from here. So I said this to City Council, I'm going to say it to you, and this is my charge to you as public servants who serve the city of Littleton. My charge is that you vote our values and not your values. And my observation is that during the comprehensive plan process, what I saw in discussion, hours of discussion, was expression of personal opinion and values and not the values defined as best for the city and best for all the people. This is a failure. And I want you to change. I want you to vote our values, not yours. And what that means is that you have to be able to define our values and codify that. We live by the rule of law here, not by individuals coming into power and taking power and abusing it. The rule of law means that you have codified what the goals are for our city, what the outcomes are, what we all want. What happened in the comprehensive plan process was what a few who are very privileged in access wanted and got. Planning Commission, it's your charge as a body, not individuals, to take the legacy of decades who have come before you and done this service and what we inherited and then pass that to people decades to come so that it doesn't hurt us or harm those people. Actually, I can't say us, I'll be dead. And that's how long your decisions matter. So they must be based on information and data. And that is not what happened during the comp plan process. So my charge is to demand that we get good information to base decisions on and that that be publicly available and reviewable so that we can speak about that as well. And if it's not provided, don't vote. Say, go get it and bring it back until the information is sufficient to make these important decisions. The other thing I wanted to talk about is wildlife corridors being placed by the Planning Commission in our zoning code along the tributaries to the South Platte River. And what this means is places like the Slaughterhouse Gulch floodplain, or Dry Creek, or even the McClellan spillway overflow. These are passages that water has created from uphill through our city to the South Platte for free. So they should be wildlife corridors. And what you should do along those properties is designate that they have lots of open space and lots of setbacks and plantings. In that way, butterflies, bees, bats, and other animals can travel up and down them, back and forth through the river. And we create an amenity that will be valuable for decades into the future. So thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that wishes to speak? Okay, on a subject not on tonight's agenda, then come on up.
Hi.
Hi. Give you your name and address or your...
My name is Joey Albrecht. I live on Alati Street. And there's a big sign that said, "Tonight, there's a hearing about ripping out those houses and putting up a high-rise."
Could I stop you for a second?
Sure.
We are going to have a public hearing next on the agenda.
Okay.
And there'll be a public comments section where you could...
Totally fine, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
So you're just going to have to wait a little while. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to general business, which there is none. We'll go next to our public hearing. This is PC Resolution 17-2019, approving a floodplain use by special exemption for building within the Slaughterhouse Gulch floodplain at the northwest corner of South Alati Street and West Powers Avenue. Can we please have a staff report?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for coming tonight. Is there somebody up there that'll get the PowerPoint up or...
Yes, they're doing it.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, so we're here tonight to discuss...
Could you get the mic right in front of you? Thanks.
Can you hear me okay now? Is that better?
Oh, yeah. Pardon me, I've got to stop you a second. We have to talk about who has been to the site and if you have talked to anybody, so let me interrupt.
Okay.
So we'll go right down the line. Have you visited the site? Did you talk to anybody?
It's on my running route. I've visited it at least 23 times this year. I did not speak with anyone on those runs.
I visited the site and did not speak with anyone.
Yes and no.
I've visited the site today and numerous other times. I did not speak to anybody today.
I have been to the site in the past, but not particularly for this meeting, and I haven't spoken to anyone.
I did not visit the site, nor did I talk to anyone there.
I visited the site, but I did not speak with anybody.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but go ahead.
Yeah, no worries. My name is Carolyn Roan. I'm the Water Resource Manager here at the city, and part of my duties are as a floodplain administrator. And we're here tonight to discuss a proposal for floodplain use by special exception for a project in the Slaughterhouse Gulch floodplain at Powers and Alati Street. And this is the subject of Resolution 17-2019. Ware Malcolm, which is the engineering company for the owner, the owner being South Metro Housing Options, has requested a floodplain use by special exception to construct new buildings within the Slaughterhouse Gulch floodplain. The site is located on kind of duplex types of buildings, properties at 5599 Alati Street, which is in the northwest corner of Alati and Powers. Just an overall of the process. Tonight, we're talking about the floodplain use by special exception and then the additional applications that were anticipated, our site development plan for the project, and then building permits to follow. This is a, here we go, there's a map that shows the location of the project area. Again, northwest corner of Powers and Alati, right next to Powers Park. And you can see it in relation to Broadway and Littleton Boulevard there. As for some of the project details, on the left shows where the project area is in relation to the overall Slaughterhouse Gulch floodplain and floodway. This is a FEMA floodplain in floodway. The dash, the diagonal dash area represents the floodway itself, and then blue is the floodplain. And the current structures on the property, there's six of them. Again, they're kind of duplex types of buildings. And those buildings are actually outside of the floodplain. As you can see, they're elevated slightly, so they're above the floodplain elevation. So that's why there's essentially those couple islands in the floodplain. And then on the right is an overall site plan of the proposed project. And in the pink is the outline of the first floor of the proposed buildings. And then the yellow is a second-story portion of the construction, which would have open parking underneath. And as you can see, based on the floodplain delineation that's in that blue, the only portion that's in the active floodplain would be any of the supporting columns for that second story of the building. And that arrow just represents the flow direction, the overall flow direction of Slaughterhouse Gulch. And I want to mention that Slaughterhouse Gulch, through much of the city of Littleton, is not a natural floodplain. It's primarily contained in storm sewer, which varies from 36-inch to 60-inch diameter. And the floodplain is just the residual flood flows that don't fit in that storm sewer. So they're flowing on the surface in streets and in portions of properties. Powers Park is one exception, where it flows into a regional detention pond there. And then it flows back into pipe again, and then it becomes open channel again just west of Windermere. So vast majority of it is piped. This is a cross-section view, just kind of a typical cross-section view of what's being proposed. The dash line represents the existing ground. The blue is of the approximate floodplain elevation. And the solid black is the proposed ground. And then yellow represents what would be actual building structures. So you can see that all of the building portions, the livable areas, would be outside of the floodwaters. And the floodwaters are quite shallow through the site as well. They're approximately 12 inches max. So as far, as part of the staff analysis, we review the various provisions contained in the floodplain regulations, which is Title 10, Chapter 6. And the key elements that apply potentially to this project are that encroachments into the floodway are prohibited unless there can be demonstrated there's no rise in floodplain elevations. Building finished lowest floor elevations must be a minimum of one foot above the floodplain. Materials and utility equipment shall be flood-resistant. All construction must be anchored to resist flood loading. Fill placement cannot adversely affect the efficiency of the water course. In addition, any fill placement is to be the minimum required to flood-proof any structures. Fill cannot result in any increased flood heights or threats to public safety, public expense, create nuisances, nor conflict with any other law ordinance. Electrical heating, ventilation, plumbing, and AC features shall all be designed to prevent water from entering. Water supply and sewer systems shall be designed to minimize infiltration into floodwaters and vice versa. And onsite waste disposal shall be located to avoid floodwaters or the contamination thereof. So after reviewing this application and with some required revisions, we have decided that it complies with the regulations because there are, is no fill or buildings located within the floodway, so that provision doesn't apply. No fill or buildings are going to be located within the floodplain. And this was a requirement, this was a condition of us not requiring a hydraulic analysis or clomer, which is a conditional letter of map revision for this particular project. We brought it forward to Planning Commission because there are the supporting pillars for the second story of the building that would be within the floodplain. And if you look at this in plan view, the overall footprint of the overall structure is in the floodplain, even though elevation-wise, it's, that second story is above it. So only those supporting pillars are in the floodwater footprint itself, and the hydraulic impact of those pillars is considered to be negligible. The grading that they've proposed demonstrates that any future buildings would be one foot minimum above the adjacent floodplain elevations, and this will all be verified with the site development plan and the building permit process, and also with ASBILT survey. And there are no critical facilities that are proposed with this. There are critical facilities pursuant to the floodplain regulations have different requirements. In addition, the project does not create an increase in floodplain elevation or flow velocity, so there's no anticipated increase in public hazard or risk. It will comply with all required regulations and permits, some of which will be a part of those future applications, those grading permit process and the SDP. They've committed to protect the trash receptacles and have also committed to various measures to protect the sanitary sewer from floodwaters and elevate all the other supporting utilities. As far as referrals go, the only agency that we sent this particular package to was Mile High Flood District. This is formerly known as Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, since they have a role and do have some role in regulating floodplains in the Denver Metro area, and they have not sent any comments, which I wouldn't expect with something like this. The site development plan is the one that will be of more interest to other agencies, and that'll be referred to many, many agencies. So staff finds that the application meets the criteria of 10-6, and therefore, we are recommending approval of PC Resolution 17-2019 with the following conditions. One, the site development plan shall reflect any building restrictions identified in this floodplain use by special exception. If the site development plan is approved, the building permit applications shall also reflect those building restrictions that are identified by this process. And three, the applicant shall conduct an ASBILT survey and complete a certificate of compliance following the construction. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, before we get into questions, I was told that South Metro Housing Options will not be making a presentation, so if you have questions, we'll direct them to staff only. So, questions for staff? Dan, we start your end.
Thank you for the report. Found it very thorough, and you answered a lot of my, some of my questions here. I guess what I'm hearing is that essentially the proposed development is basically benign to the existing floodway.
Yeah.
Has absolutely no impact to it.
Yeah, that's our, that's our conclusion, yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Greg?
I'll hold my questions. I don't have any at this time.
Okay. There's a letter in the application from the civil engineer on the project, it looks like. And, I mean, this may have been resolved, but in the letter, it says, "All work associated with this project, including grading, site improvements, and building construction, are proposed to be outside of the floodway." But from what I read and from what you said, it sounds like that's not the case. There will be construction...
It's outside of the floodway, which is that dashed, if you, on the left, on the exhibit there, that dashed, diagonal dashed area is the floodway, and all the work is outside of that. The floodplain is where there is still those supporting pillars. Yeah.
So the floodway is to the west of the project?
It's within, it's a portion of the floodplain. So, yeah, it just goes diagonal across the very bottom corner there.
Okay.
Of the project. And that's, they're proposing to put that into an easement as well with the...
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's, that is part, that is on the, on the parcel, correct?
It is.
Okay. All right, thanks.
By the way, the applicant's engineer is here, in case we have questions that staff cannot ask, answer, so. Jason?
Certainly. Could you talk a little bit about the other processes involved? The site development plan, is that an administrative process, i.e., no public hearing?
Thank you. That is a, so we haven't received the site development plan application yet. But once we do, that is an administrative process, which will fall under the new site development plan regulations for, for, over four buildings on a particular site. That can be, that administrative approval could be appealed by anyone within 700 feet, any property owner within 700 feet of the, of the proposed development.
All right. Thank you. And the focus tonight is on the impacts purely to the floodplain and not necessarily on site design issues.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sherry? Any questions?
I do. I have a few. One, could you just clarify what water course is? As a, is that direction or...
It's just a term that's used for a flow. You know, it could be a river, it could be a stream, it could be flowing sheet flow, kind of like what this is. It just means the, the direction and the path of the water.
Okay. So that, that's, I was just trying to get all the definitions with floodplain, flood court, flow.
Yeah. Water course is a term that's used in the code, but it essentially is just meaning that the flowing water, yeah.
All right. And then I had a question about, just had a page five, paragraph about, oh, Section 10-6-3. It says, "The proposal is located within the 1% chance floodplain." What does that mean? Is that 100-year floodplain?
Yeah. We're trying to go away a little bit from the terminology 100-year because it is deceptive, and FEMA is starting to use that 1% chance, because, and it is the same thing.
Okay. And then, let's see, I just want to clarify, in some of the letter, I think the architect's letter, I believe it was, refers to the property having single-family homes, and then the staff report says multifamily residential, so...
Right up, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, the, what's currently on the site are 12 duplex homes, I believe. And we've received a pre-application that's not necessarily directly related to the site plan you see on the screen, talking about 51 multifamily apartments. So the, I think the anticipation from South Metro Housing Options is to do an apartment development on the, on the property instead of duplexes. So I'm not sure that I can speak directly to what they meant in the, in the application itself, but our understanding is that they'd go to an apartment development. itself, but our understanding is that they'd go to an apartment development.
Okay. And I think I had just one more question. Oh, I noticed it said in the, the report from the housing options that on the public meeting, there was, there were two people who came to the meeting and only one made a comment. And the only comment I saw was, "Just curious, no comment." Is that the only comment that was made? Does anybody know?
So we, staff did not attend the, the neighborhood meeting, but asked the applicant for a summary of that, of that meeting. And that's what they gave us.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Bruce?
Is there any history of flooding in this area that we're aware of?
Nothing that's impacted homes that I can recall. I think there has been, you know, quite a bit of flow in the streets and whatnot during larger, you know, some of the larger rain events of the past, but I'm not aware of anything damaging the homes in SlaughterhouseGulch specifically.
From a modeling standpoint, what kind of rainfall are we talking about that would constitute a 1% event?
My recollection is it's something like, it's, it's based on a rainfall intensity and it's something on the order of, I want to say maybe five inches for an hour or something like that. I mean, it's very substantial.
Okay.
I can get back to you with the specifics, but yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's, I'll stop there.
I found it curious and a little confusing in the report saying that nothing, none of the building is in the floodplain, but the column of the buildings in the floodplain. Isn't the column of the building part of the building structure?
Well, it's, it is part of the overall structure. And I think that's why we brought it forth to the commission because if when the strict interpretation of the code is anything requiring a building permit. So because of those supporting columns, but there are no first floor buildings or walls and things like that.
But the column is, I mean, to say that it's not in the floodplain, but to say a column's in the floodplain of the building, it just seems like that's contradictory and it's obviously there's a column in the floodplain.
Okay. Well, yeah, for clarification, I guess, would be just that first floor construction of livable space is outside of the floodplain and the columns are in. Yeah.
I was curious when the last time this floodplain was studied, basing that on our previous exemption, that was just a block or two east where they did their own look at the floodplain and it was different than what FEMA had come up with. And so I was curious, any possibility of this having changed as that had?
They, there, that one was a little different and then it had a split flow condition and they wanted to model that in more detail. That is, that's not, I mean, there is sort of a split, but it's not the same, same kind of condition. The original, it's been studied a number of different times and there was a letter of map revision done most recently and that's what the current FEMA floodplain is based on. I'd have to double check what the year was. I mean, it's not within the last, you know, five years or something. It's older than that.
But no concerns and any changes?
You mean, do I think it might look significantly different if it was restudied right now today?
I just can't help going back to Hurricane Harvey where all those homes were told they were not in the floodplain, but lo and behold, during the hurricane, they suddenly were in the floodplain and there had been the development changes and hence those homeowners were caught completely off guard with that.
Right.
So that just, that's where that question comes from.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, Harvey had some other situations where a lot of those were put in fill and that kind of thing. So it was, it was different. This, this isn't that situation.
No, it's just a situation of being told you're not in the floodplain, but you are in the floodplain. That was my only comparison.
Yeah. And, and, you know, if this was to be studied in great detail, it may look slightly different. But given how shallow the surface floodplain is, even with this study, I just don't, I don't see that there would be something substantially different.
Thank you.
If it was studied again.
Appreciate that.
Dan?
Okay. In the staff communication, it talked about, and I'll quote, "Staff required that any fill or building inside the floodplain be hydraulically modeled." I can understand how the building could be hydraulically modeled. For instance, the columns would have to be strong enough to withstand the lateral pressures of that flood that, that be rolling down that, that streetway that.
Right.
But what, what does it mean by hydraulically modeled fill?
Well, what we discussed with the applicant early on, what they, they, because of the funding source for, for their project, they couldn't go through a FEMA clomer process. And so what we told them was the only configuration that would work is if they kept all fill out of the, of the, of the floodplain. And there was, and so there would be nothing that would require hydraulic modeling. And, and what I mean by that is there's a certain kind of hydraulic model that's developed to predict water surface elevations along a water course. And because of adjacent structures in this immediate area being within the floodplain and we didn't want to potentially impact any of them, we told them, you know, we would send something like that to a clomer if they wanted to do any kind of fill. They would have to actually model the, the change in the topography and the cross sections and see what the impact would be from that. But they opted to avoid that with this, this, the plan that they've come forth with.
I just thought of.
Does that answer it? I'm not, okay.
I thought of another question here. Let's say you've got the 100 or 150-year flood. It gathers up cars from upstream and rolls those cars down the floodway, or the floodplain, I should say, and they munch into the columns. That has to be a bit of a concern there, that debris could cause problems.
I think that's true. However, here, this portion of the floodplain is so shallow, I, no significant debris like that is going to be conveyed just because it is so, it's shallow and relatively slow. Certainly in other kind of floodplain events or flooding events elsewhere, you could have a situation like that occurring.
So you consider shallow enough not to be of a major concern?
Yeah.
Okay. The other questions, I know this is not a zoning hearing or a site development plan hearing, but a couple of questions. This is a, this an R5 site I saw, is that correct?
This is an R5 which has a PDO overlay or planned development overlay on top of it.
And the overlay, overlay was for those, those duplex structures?
That's correct.
And when were the structures built? Looks 70-ish or 60-ish?
I don't know the, the exact answer to that question, but I may be able to find out through the course of the meeting.
Just, just a curiosity question.
I would guess 70s or late 60s, 70s, somewhere in there.
Down the road, will this be coming to the Planning Commission for any zoning issue or is it just a use by right, go to the building department, go to zoning?
Unless it were to be appealed by a neighboring property owner, it would just be administrative and it could go through an administrative process from the planning division to the building division.
Okay. And the project is two stories maximum, is that correct? Today?
Our, today it is two stories maximum, but in the pre-application meeting, they had proposed a, a three-story. You know, you've got the podium parking underneath the building. They had proposed a three-story product, including the parking. So that would be parking below two stories. But we haven't seen the site development plan yet and it would all have to meet the, the height regulations of the, of the district and the, and the planned development overlay.
Bruce, that's all I have. Bruce?
Neglected to ask, can you talk a little bit about the, I think you talked about the anchoring of the columns that are supporting the structure? Give us a little color there.
What, what they had submitted as part of their report was that they would be on drilled, there would be some piers, the foundations would be piers supporting the columns. So it'll be anchored pretty substantially.
Are they going to do peering down to bedrock or do they not need to?
That's not something I, that we, we know as of yet with what's been submitted, but I wouldn't consider that to be necessary, given the, the shallow depths of the floodplain here.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My guess is the, it would be drill piers, concrete drill piers down to bedrock, which is usually 20 to 30 feet.
Yeah.
And then you would anchor your, your concrete columns on that, on that pier.
Yeah.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
This is probably getting a little far. I actually have a couple of questions. One came up, just out of curiosity, what's the maximum height of the PDO? Do you know? If you don't, it's not a big deal.
I'm sorry, I don't know that right off the bat, but I'll see if I can find out.
It's not a big deal. We're not, we're not really in that zone right now. But I did want to ask, Commissioner Almond had asked a question about what exists on the site today. It sounded like the answer came, was about what, what's going to be on the site. So just to clarify, on page two of the staff report, it says, "The subject property contains multifamily residential currently today." Is that the duplexes you were referring to?
That is the duplexes. Those, there are six duplex buildings on the site.
Okay. I was confused then. Okay. Thanks. That's it.
I have one other question here. On the second page of the applicant's submittal under floodway data, there's a number of green markings and highlights on there.
Right. And those, those are my markups actually.
Okay. Okay. So there's no part of the development that's in the floodway, I get that. But it says if there's no floodway defined, but the projects within the floodplain attach a hydraulic analysis and verification, the project causes, causes six inches or less of increase in the 100-year water surface. Then there's, it says grade within zone AE is not being altered over six inches. My understanding of reading that is that if the project causes more than six inches of increase in the 100-year water surface elevation, not the grade.
That's correct. And that's why I marked it as not applicable for that, that whole, that whole piece of the application.
Okay.
So you're right. It's, it's referring to water surface elevations, not proposed grades.
So the assumption with any site development plan is that anywhere within that floodplain, they would not be changing the grade more than six inches?
Right. And in fact, we'll, we'll review that really carefully as part of site development because the condition in which this was approved to go forward in this way was that there would be no change. So not even six inches.
Okay. Okay. Even for parking improvements or landscaping or?
Nope.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll move on. We do not, again, we do not have an applicant presentation, so we'll go right into public comment. We do have a sign up sheet. If you haven't signed up and you still wish to speak, we'll, we'll ask if anybody else wishes to speak at the end of our list here. You'll have three minutes to speak. Again, the yellow card will come out when you have 30 seconds left. The red card will come up when your three minutes are up. We ask the discourse to be civil. Please give your name and address or district number and speak directly into the microphone. We'll start up with Theodore Swan.
I probably shouldn't have signed up on that. I'm just here to answer questions on behalf of Theodore.
You're set. This is difficult. Ivan, I can't get the last name.
Yeah, that was me. Same thing. I thought it was just a sign sheet, not, not to speak. So I apologize.
Okay. Next one, again, we need a better pen here. Is it Corey Ritz or something of that nature?
Same as the previous two.
We thought it was a sign sheet, sorry.
Okay. That concludes the people that have signed up. So everybody, anybody else wishes to address the subject? Now, thank you. Thank you for waiting.
Wait till you get to the mic.
If you could give your name and address.
My name is Joey Albrecht. I'm at 5560 South Alati Street, right across the street from the proposed project. Somebody said that, that there was a quote, "Discussion of the neighbors and there was only one person." I've been here three years. I've never heard there was anything of, of until this sign that put up there and that's why we're here. So I don't know who put up that neighbor thing, but you know, there's people, everyone in that neighborhood is very upset about this whole thing. And most of the people couldn't even come because they're, they're, they're not, they don't have a lot of money, they don't have cars, they don't have a way to get here, you know, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't be impacted. The other thing you were talking about that, that, you know, in over five years that you haven't had a problem with, with rain, less than a year, I looked over there and there was a lake. The entire place was filled with water.
You mean at Powers Park next door?
That, it's right next door to those.
The park? Yeah. It probably did fill.
It was huge.
Yeah. It, that's a five-year detention pond, so that'll, that'll fill with water in just a five-year event.
I think we, excuse me, we need to let the applicant speak for their three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Oh, sorry.
You can comment on her comments afterwards. Okay?
Yeah. I mean, that, first of all, there was, there was a lot of concern about kids playing over in that. There's, there's nothing that was in place to protect kids or other people that got into that water. And supposedly, they told me that, that it's eight to 12 inches deep when it's filled like that. So that was very concerning to me. It's an impact for the people that, that live there that are low-income housing, they're going to get kicked out of those places. There's impact for the wildlife that's in that area. So there's a lot of things that, that we're concerned about and I hope that, you know, we will have other discussions and not just some administrative thing that nobody else can talk about of this. Because this is our first time that we've heard about this, other people have heard about this. We came tonight to tell you guys a lot of opinions of the, of the neighborhood people that, again, they don't have necessarily the ability to come and do here. You know, they don't have transportation or whatever. So, you know, hopefully you will think about these things and have that in, in concern. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
My name is Camille and that's C-A-M-I-L-L-E, RUFF, R-U-F-F as in Fred. And my address is 5560 South Alati, apartment 210 Littleton. And I've lived in this area, well, I, I moved to that building in July of 2017. And I've noticed even up the hill, the property where the factory used to be, there have been several different public hearings and signs for public hearings to rezone that there. I was not aware that we were in a floodplain and it sounds like y'all are doing well with that. Although I had friends in Oklahoma that lived in one of those, 100-year flood came and all the people in their development had, all they could do is walk away. I also think of Big Thompson Canyon, you know. But my overall concern is I moved into, I'm now retired and I'm on a fixed income and I live in a subsidized apartment in my building. All the apartments in that building are subsidized in one way or another. And I came from Inglewood and Inglewood now is undergoing a gentrification process. And a lot of the apartments are buildings, the rents are going sky high. And this neighborhood that we're talking about here, if you've never been in it, it's very interesting. I've never seen a neighborhood that had so many apartment buildings in it. I'm just, I'm just blown away. But my overall concern is not probably immediate. But if the process of development continues, then those of us who cannot afford market rent, and the only way I'm surviving now is I went from an apartment in Inglewood that was 1,065 and got a subsidized apartment here at 478. And that's how I survive. I'm 69 years old and I'm losing my vision and it's not going to be real easy for me to go out and get a job. And it's not going to be real easy for me to go out and get a job. Heaven knows I've tried. So that's my eventual, I know that's not going to happen in two weeks. But eventually, this process of gentrification drives people out and marginalizes them. And I've experienced that in Denver. I used to live in Old Highlands when it was a pretty rough neighborhood. And now people have moved in and the prices of housing and everything have hiked up. And I'll tell you what, I couldn't afford to rent a garage in Old Highlands now. So, that's basically our concern. And I'm, I'm glad to know that you all are, you know, thinking about the floodplain and everything. But it's just the beginning of the process of what might happen over which I'm concerned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Trujillo, and I live on the far side of the waterway, Lake Jose, I call it. It's right behind me. And for those that have never seen it, I've seen it run over the top and down the streets heading west. And there was, there were some houses that were impacted by this down, as far as down to Windermere. And that's where the water feeds in through there. But, that being said, the flood control that we have here is two, two 30-inch pipes coming in this way. And one 30-inch going out the other end. That's to gather up the water and then allow it to slowly feed out. And it has been, went over the top quite a few times. And there have been a lot of kids and young teenagers jumping in the water with tubes and everything. It's most dangerous because of the fact that it's pulling a lot of pressure through there. And I only say that for people that don't think there's going to be any water coming down here, they're really kind of not looking very far ahead of themselves. Our family came here in 1924, if you can add, go back that far. And we, we've lived along the rivers and there was a lot of farming areas that every spring, waters come up, spread out quite a ways. And the actual waterway for the South Platte River, if you ever look at the drawings of it, the bank of the South Platte River was Windermere. And that went all the way across to Lowell, above there, almost where you would see the Denver Water Plant over there. It had to be a very big rain. And I, I don't know how to say that it's going to be a 100-year flood or there won't be. Chatfield's out there and it is not going to do a whole heck of a lot one of these days. It's going to go over, over the top. So I just want you to really think about the change in the floodplain because of the fact that there is always that possibility, especially with all the building we have to, east of us, you see it more and more. So I would hope you'd give good consideration. It does come through here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm still Pam Chadbourne, and I still live a block and a half from here, so a couple of things. I think these comments on it have illustrated the limitations of a simple hydrological analysis. And that is the living, breathing, operational effect of floods. So they are actual real-time events and their impact is different to just having water somewhere on a structure. And I appreciate the comment about debris. My thought was, what about emergency evacuations? We have heard, you know, there are catastrophes all over the world where seniors or people who are disabled live and they cannot get out. And, you know, 12 inches of water is a lot. If you are older or in, you have a physical problem in some way, you can't wade through 12 inches, and that's where the cars are, guys. So they have to go down there to get out. I'm worried about the ability to evacuate this facility in a flood. And that's nowhere in this consideration. My larger comment is, where are the bigger considerations? And where do we get the chance to examine these? Where do you get the chance to examine these? I, I think most of the time, and you know I've been here at almost every meeting that you folks have, you raise good questions. And I want more of that. We, the city, must have that to build for the next several decades, generations. So this process is too limited. This floodplain exception process is too limited. I want you to explore how we can broaden this and get more visibility of the building going on for reasons like the effect of the flood. And also for what people have brought up, what impact is this going to have on the neighborhood? That has a right to be considered. And you know I've had this concern before. So the other thing for the record is that South Metro Housing Options, over a year ago, decided that they were going to divest the city of 71 housing units that are on public property and publicly managed. Without really much public visibility at all or input. This is exactly the wrong direction for a city to go. Most cities would passionately give tons of money or in renewal money, whatever, to create these housing units now, income integrated into communities, these are all scattered out, they're not in one place. This is a very dense housing thing. It's not the way you want to build housing, public housing. And as people pointed out, it, it's a great neighborhood that's diverse. And we have that as a goal in our comp plan. And this kind of thing does, it changes that. We all need a chance to comment on it. So please look into fixing this process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of our hearing. Yeah, now we have staff comments responding to some of the speakers.
Thank you, Chairman. So, not really a response, but some questions were asked earlier that I said I, I might be able to find out some of the answers to. This PDO, as I recall, we have searched high and low for the plan development overlay and couldn't find no record of it. We've asked the applicant if they have any record of the PDO. It may be a zoning map error, potentially. But we didn't find any record of a, any decision by the Planning Commission for a, for a plan development overlay on this, on this piece of property. The maximum height in the R5 zoning district is 30 feet. And, oh yes, the buildings were built in approximately 1976. I was able to access the Arapahoe County assessor's records. And at least one of the buildings was built in 1976, so I suppose that's pretty close to when most of them were built. One of the citizens that came to the podium had a concern about gentrification. And this is a, one to remind the, the commission and the public that this would be a South Metro Housing Options project, which would most likely focus on affordable housing. And that was all I had. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me jump in on the, the PDO. All I could dig up quickly this afternoon was the unofficial zoning map from, an old one from 2016. There's, there's no designation of a, of a PDO on that site. It just looks like it's R5. So how, how do you know it's, there's a PDO floating around?
That, so we recently did a official zoning map.
Right.
The designation on the official zoning map is R5 PDO.
Oh, it does show it there, okay.
That's how we, that is the zoning of the property right now. But you, you may be right, there may not be a PDO on this property and may be misidentified.
Do you have any comments? And then I'm going to open it up to Planning Commission. Last questions for staff.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up a little bit on some of the public comment. The, the way that the notification worked for the public meeting that was held by the applicant is there was a, there was a large list of property owners in the surrounding area that were sent invitations. But what we're discovering and looking at this is that they go to, they go to owners, not necessarily residents. And because there are a number of apartments in the area, some of the individual residents may not have known about it occurring. And then I wanted to speak a little bit about the discussions of flooding and flood history in the area. Littleton is in a very challenging situation in that a lot of the city, including along Slaughterhouse-Golch, was developed before the floodplains were ever studied or delineated originally. And so over the years, the city has attempted to do some things to help reduce that surface flooding to the extent they can. One of which is the pond that was referred to, that's at Powers Park. That park was turned into a flood detention facility by Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. And, but even with that, that pond still can only hold up to a five-year storm volume. And so in the event that you have rain events in excess of that, it, it will overtop and, and flow downstream. And it could be that downstream of this particular site, it could be that some homes were impacted by some of that overtopping. On the site itself, you know, there was a question brought up about the flooding. And I had interpreted that to mean, what's the history of, of this 100-year event occurring and, and this delineation being realized? And, and that's what I don't necessarily have information on. Or I don't have any history of this particular 100-year flood delineation occurring, you know, on this particular parcel. Certainly, there has been a number of events where the, you know, the flow has been in the street, but maybe not to this extent at this particular location. So in addition to the Powers Park detention, which was put in to, to try to help reduce flooding, and that was in an attempt to reduce frequent, more frequent flooding up to the five-year event, the city also partnered with Centennial to put in a larger facility upstream of Broadway called the Grant Street Detention Pond, which also further reduced flood peaks. But again, despite these efforts, we still haven't been able to get floods to fit within the existing storm sewer system so that we didn't have any residual surface flooding. You know, the option for the city moving forward would be actually to, to purchase up properties, which has just been, is cost prohibitive at the time, for right now. Anyway, we do try to take advantage of opportunities to purchase floodplain properties when that's available and feasible, but not in this particular case. And then I just wanted to reiterate, as we discussed during the presentation, that while there is existing flood risk here already, the project as proposed does not change it. So, for what that's worth.
Additional questions for staff?
If I may.
Sure.
I think I heard, Mike, I think you mentioned that South Metro Housing Options proposes affordable housing? Would that, is that, I'm not sure of the mission of South Metro. Is that their mission? I know it's designated for senior on what I see here, but is it supposed to be attainable or affordable?
So my understanding of the mission of South Metro Housing Options, Corey's here in the, in the audience and can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the former Littleton Housing Authority, and their mission is to provide affordable housing for this, this area. The application form did mention senior housing, but I'm not sure, like the, like the, the mention of apartments versus, you know, the existence of apartments right now, that, that may not have been fully correct. My, my understanding is it's mainly affordable housing that they provide, although there could be some potential, I guess, to do senior housing on the site, perhaps.
One other question. I think this is Detective Carolyn. The, I know I used to own a home in a floodplain and was required by my bank to have flood insurance through FEMA. Would the building owner, assuming it's apartments and there's a landlord, would they be required to have flood insurance?
The existing buildings are not actually within the floodplain per that past letter of map provision I mentioned. So they don't currently have to carry flood insurance. And the way the proposed structure is configured and the way the second story will be elevated above, my understanding is that they also would not have to have flood insurance.
Okay. Thank you. That, Bruce?
Given that the flood, the potential for flood isn't going to be dramatically altered if a new development occurs, would it be fair to say that the existing structures have more risk because they have first-floor occupancy versus what we're essentially talking about here, second-floor occupancy?
Well, the first-floor buildings that I've shown in pink, those are, those are going to be first-floor occupancy. So they will carry the same level of risk that the current buildings within that footprint would have. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then Commissioner Stallman, you had, you had asked a question about the rain that can be expected in a 100-year. The rainfall data for Littleton, and I had misspoken, for over a one-hour duration, it's, it's roughly 2.2 inches. But, but more importantly, it's the intensities that can occur within that hour. An 100-year event could be as high as six inches, intensity of six inches an hour over, say, a 10-minute period or four inches an hour over a 25-minute period.
Okay.
If that helps.
Thank you.
Anyone? Jason? Jerry? No? Anything?
I'm wondering if there is a potential here to improve our notification process. We've heard comments before from people who live in this particular section of town not getting the notification. I know that we sent them out to the home, to the owners of the property, but who's at stake here are the people who live in those homes. Is, maybe there's a way we can look into providing a notification so that the individuals who live there are able to learn about this sooner?
As we embark on updating our code, that is definitely something that we can consider.
Yeah. It's important to make sure that they're heard. And I can hear the frustration in their voices that, surprise, this happened, we weren't notified. So, thank you.
I guess I'll chime in because I think what I heard was that there was a neighborhood meeting that was scheduled regarding this property, and some people didn't receive any notification of that. Specifically for this floodplain application, there isn't a requirement for a public meeting. So I'm not sure what that was in reference to, perhaps some of the future plans that SMHO has for this particular parcel. But for the actual moving something out of the floodplain or constructing or reconstructing within the floodplain, there's no requirement for the neighborhood meeting. The published notice is the same as it is for most public hearings, but obviously maybe some room for improvement.
Intriguing, since that was included in our packet, that they had this process. But it still shows the problem of the, the people who live here not being notified. So, thank you.
Can you clarify? I mean, you sent out notices to every property owner within five miles, it seems. At any rate, and you had the public meeting with, I think, two people showed up. Clarify.
So typically, when, in our operating standards, anytime there's a public hearing required, at a pre-application meeting, we tell the applicant to hold a neighborhood meeting prior to providing us with a formal application, in this case, a floodplain request. So that's in our operating standards, that they have a neighborhood meeting before they apply. We, there are no, in our operating standards, there are no requirements for who to notify. We suggest to them We suggest to them that they do the regular public hearing notification of 700 feet from the property boundaries, but that's not a requirement for this type of neighborhood meeting. For the site development plan, in this case, we do have new standards that say they have to have a neighborhood meeting, they have to notify people within 700 feet of that neighborhood meeting, and then before we approve a site development plan, they have to notify property owners within 700 feet of the property boundaries of the date of decision. And then anybody who is a property owner within 700 feet has the ability to appeal that within 20 days. And Ms. Henniger referenced the, you know, with the code revision, we may try and take a look at that, who we notify. Right now, the code says property owners, which, in the case of one of the residents that came tonight, it was the apartment owner that was on our notification list, not the individual residents. So, it may be something that the individual residents can communicate with their, the property owner and say, hey, we'd like to know about those when they come through, or there may be things that we can do with the new code.
You could ask them, it might be hard to verify if they've talked to the tenants.
Very difficult.
I would agree with Robin's editorial comment about somehow, in these kind of situations where there's a lot of rental units in the areas, somehow getting the notice out, not just the property owners.
And we do have three, I apologize, we do have three forms of notification for public hearings. There's the mail notice, the website, and the posting of the property.
Right. Let's see. Are all these units going to be rental units?
I don't think so.
I assume they are?
I think so.
Yes, typically, the South Metro Housing Options would do rental, as opposed to ownership. And I do have their mission statement on my screen. I think I gave a pretty good summary of it, but if you'd like to hear it verbatim, I'm happy to do that.
The existing units, the duplexes, I assume they're also rentals, so you're not displacing a property owner of, you know, one side of one unit?
That's correct.
Okay. Somebody had mentioned, I think, there was a, they talked about a 30-inch pipe incoming and a 30-inch pipe outgoing. I think from the staff report, I thought I heard some, or read something about a five-foot, 60-inch.
The storm sewer system varies in size as you go along the gulch. The 30-inch outflow pipe that I think was being referred to is, that comes out of the detention pond at Powers Park, and the reason it's smaller is to restrict the outflow so that it backs up water and detains the volume to reduce the peak. That's part of the reason why, yeah.
With respect to that, is there grating over these pipes so that somebody can't crawl in and get sucked down?
At Powers Park, there are grates over both the entrance pipe and exit pipe, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Jason, we're going to let you do that.
All right. Very well. I move to approve the resolution approving the floodplain use by special exception for building within the Slaughterhouse Gulch floodplain at the northwest corner of South Elati Street and West Powers Avenue with the following conditions. One, the site development plan shall comply with building restrictions identified in this floodplain use by special exception. And two, should the site development plan be approved prior to the construction, the applicant shall obtain a building permit that is also in compliance with all building restrictions of this floodplain use by special exception. And three, the applicant shall conduct an as-built survey and a certificate of compliance will be completed following construction of the buildings.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. We can go up and down the line. Sherry, maybe we start with you.
I have no discussion items at this point.
Certainly. Yeah, I really appreciated the staff's presentation and the emphasis that there's no increase in public hazard and risk based on the data presented. We had a plea earlier for more data analysis, and with the engineering that the applicant provided and staff analyzed, they were able to demonstrate that there's no increase in risk should this be approved, and I found that very compelling.
I agree with that sentiment. What I was going to mention as well was, I'd like to make sure and request that staff go the extra mile in terms of making sure that the handoffs here to other staff departments, for example, the building use permits and certificates and so forth and so on, that there's clear understanding of the requirements downstream, if you will, from other departments. I mean, we've seen some instances where something that gets approved here or gets amended here maybe hadn't been adequately passed on. So I just make the request that we go the extra mile therein.
Absolutely.
But otherwise, good, well done, I think. Dan?
Just going to second what Jason said, that based on the analysis that the staff put together, it appears that it's in compliance with the City of Littleton code, and I'll be voting to approve.
Craig?
Okay, and I'm not going to second that. I do, looking at the map and the floodplain that's there now, to me, it doesn't seem like those buildings should have ever been put there. And, you know, so they're creating little islands in this site, and now, as it's being, looking at an opportunity to redevelop the site, the building footprints have to conform to those little islands that were built for the current buildings that are there, unless they change the floodplain, unless they go for a clomer and a lomer. And I recognize that that's a difficult process, a challenging process, it can be a costly process. In my mind, it's the right thing to do here, is to develop this site as intended use. I think affordable housing and attainable housing here is appropriate, and upping the density to provide more for this community, I think is a worthy goal. But I'm concerned that the potential for redevelopment of this site is limited by what is right now outside the floodplain, and I think there's an opportunity here with some additional thought and creativity and investment to do something much better that would not only improve the look and feel of that development, but would also perhaps expand the open space affiliated with the park, which would provide more detention, maybe even lessen some of the flooding potential in the surrounding neighborhood. So I'm not supporting this, and I may be at odds with my fellow commissioners, but I think there's an opportunity missed here if we approve this.
I can appreciate that, the fact that South Metro Housing Options is proposing to build a, you know, presumably affordable, low-income housing project. However, we're not really here to discuss what they're building or why, we're here to discuss the fact that we've got a floodplain and whether we're going to allow columns to be built in the floodplain, I guess. And, you know, construction on the site, given that there's a floodplain in part of the site, you know, given that there is, you know, there are six buildings there now, it seems like building, new buildings with the same sort of MO as the neighborhood, where, you know, there seems to be a lot of affordable housing in this area. I think that's, you know, a good continued use of the property, and I don't see anyone building luxury townhomes on this site, so I think it's, you know, it's a good use of the property, and I think the, you know, the floodplain issue, I think, is almost a non-issue, because there won't be any construction in that area, so I'll support it as well.
Comment?
I agree that the criteria for the floodplain use by special exception is met by what we have received from staff. I don't disagree with what Craig's saying about lost opportunity, but for what's in front of us, it's about the special exemption, exception, and it does appear to be met.
I appreciate what staff presented, it was thorough, especially the written material. Good presentation tonight. I'll thank the public and their input, kind of food for thought on notification in the future, it's a good thing. It's been proven to me that the impact of this project is benign in the floodplain. It is a little amusing to see the little islands of one-story structures, and then the Rube Goldberg weaving in the second floor to stay away from the floodplain. I mean, I've seen designs fully influenced by homeowners, sometimes homeowners' associations, I've seen projects influenced by zoning. This is my first project I've ever seen that the major design influence is a floodplain. It's kind of very interesting. That's all the comments I have. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second, time to vote.
The vote is six in, the vote is six in favor with Commissioner Coronado voting no, the motion carries six to one.
Need to get these lights to show up better, so I can see who hasn't pushed their button. Okay. That takes care of tonight's public hearing, comments and reports, staff has some reports and talk about what's going on with our zoning code.
So, we are working on a scope of work right now, just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. We are anticipating a kickoff to this project in January, that is our hope.
Could you stick that microphone right in your, it's tough to...
I'll just eat it. I always feel like I'm like going to swallow this thing. So, to repeat, we are anticipating, starting off our zoning code update in January, we are looking at doing a speaker series again in conjunction with our code update. Right now, we're leaning towards what we'll call building blocks, where we'll focus on specific areas of the city as we go through this process. We are going to, I would say we have seen, continue to see development in downtown, so really, probably most likely tackling that area first, and really starting that conversation, that public conversation about downtown. So we do anticipate that being kind of first out of the starting blocks. So, rest up the rest of the month before we dig in next month on that. What was the other thing on that I had put on the agenda?
Future study sessions.
So, we had had a conversation about possibly with the code update and the conversations that are going to need to be had, and kind of the pros and cons and analysis of potentially having study sessions prior to our planning commission meetings, so having them be more consistent, possibly meeting, you know, at 5:30. Sometimes we could do dinner, sometimes we would not be able to do that, so we can kind of decide. But really, having conversations not only about the code analysis, but also if we have items on the agenda, if you had any questions prior to the hearing, we could answer those. We would have legal counsel there to make sure we don't answer anything we're not supposed to. But I just wanted to put that out there and see what planning commissioners thought about that, if it would work there with your schedule, or we can do what we did with the comprehensive plan, and when we don't necessarily have a public hearing or a formal agenda, we can discuss the code. So, just wanting...
Were you thinking of before every meeting, or just once a month, or?
Open for discussion.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Open for discussion, if you would want to do it prior to every meeting, or just the first meeting of the month.
And so, I guess I'd chime in and say, you know, tomorrow, where staff is meeting with city council to talk specifically about some of the areas of change that the city is experiencing and some of the inconsistencies between what was adopted within the comprehensive plan, as well as what currently exists within our code. So depending upon the direction that council gives staff in terms of what areas they would like staff to focus on, whether that's any number of legal options as it relates to, I guess I would say being more thoughtful in what development is coming in to the downtown areas, assuming that's the area that they direct us to focus on. It may, I guess it may kind of speed up some of the processes in terms of what could be appearing before planning commission. For example, if staff is directed to start looking at very specific or particular code changes, obviously, we're all aware that the actual, the overhaul is going to take well over a year. However, if the direction that staff receives from council is, okay, proceed with the overhaul and the over year and a half that it will take, but in the interim, we need you to focus on A, B, and C, then that may lead to kind of more immediate impacts on planning commission as these items are brought to your attention.
Yeah, and, well, you ready for comments?
Yes, I am looking for your comments and input if you would like to have the study sessions.
Go ahead.
Well, this actually was a little different than on the study sessions, but I do like the idea of having the study sessions as you are speaking. I am curious about how you see incorporating planning commission in with the zoning code updates. Like, when we did the comprehensive plan, we had lots of conversations, you know, with Kendig and Keast. We were able to be very participative in that process, but in the transportation master plan, we didn't have that, and we were, you know, it was just much more during the city council meetings, and how do you see this progressing?
Some of the items that are outlined in the scope right now, we're going to continue, you know, a fairly robust public engagement process. I honestly see planning commission involved more than city council on some of these aspects, just because we're getting into the details. Really, council is a policymaking body. We've made that policy with the comprehensive plan, and the zoning code gets into regulatory, which is where the planning, community development department and planning commission comes in. City council will definitely be involved in the conversation, but I see myself looking to you as the planning commissioners for more input on what we're doing with the code.
I'm going to jump in with my comments here. I've been saying for months that the zoning code rewrite and the zoning code map update will make the comprehensive plan look like a walk-through-the-tulips. This is going to be very hard and very intense, and yes, it'll be at least a year, probably a year and a half, maybe even two years before it all gets done.
Right now, the scope's at 18 to 24 months.
Let's see. When I, when we first talked about this, I wanted to jump in and just blast our way through and do the entire zoning code all at once, you know, one fell swoosh there. But you started talking to us, Robin and I, a couple of weeks ago about the zoning blocks, and that started to make a little more sense, especially if we have concerns in certain areas that really need some quick attention. The only concern I have about the blocks is, and I've seen this again and again, and in...
Littleton, is that we get going on doing a part of it, fully intending to do all of it. We finish one part, and then it just kind of, we take a couple of months off or three months off, or it just kind of dies on the vine, and, and here we go again. Twenty years from now, we'll be thinking about trying to do the zoning code again. We have to obviously avoid, it has to be methodical and, and constant. And, but while you were talking, I came with the thought of, of a dual-layer type of system where we can work on the, the, the specific blocks for areas of concern, but in the background, we are working on the entire code and getting organized. And so again, there's, some, some people are working on, your staff is working on the blocks, others are working on the whole thing, so.
That's the plan.
Other comments?
I have a couple of comments.
Oh, sure.
One, I, I agree with Mark that we, having the background work seems imperative really at this point so that we could keep moving forward, but in terms of meetings specifically, it seems there are times when one-hour meeting is not going to be sufficient or ideal. However, I think there are other times that it could be where we just have questions or need that quick background, and I, I like the idea of being able to ask questions and get information that, you know, a lot of times we have to ask it in public hearing and take up time to, you know, like, what is water course? Don't know what that means, you know, those kinds of things. So if we could have a mix, a mixture thereof, I think that would be helpful. I know a lot of people have constraints with their, obviously, their careers trying to get here early, so I think that's going to have to be somewhat limited. It may not be very often that we can do that, but if we could have that mixture, that'd be great.
In our, in our organizations, obviously, the, the second leg here is the, is just how we're gonna engage the public. And we need a, a plan of action. If it's anything like our comprehensive plan, it will be good, but we need to see something. And then we can weave in how the planning commission gets involved with, with, you know, let's say, once a month, updates before a regular meeting or afterwards. We get the schedule of public appearance, public meetings where we can come and just shut up and listen to the public. So, but we need that. And we also need a, you know, an, an end time. When is it gonna be done so we can all work for that end time? It certainly worked for the comp plan, and I, I didn't believe we can do it, but we did it in 18 months, and I.
Right, and similar to the comp plan, how we had kind of those phases and basically the milestones, we're really trying to establish that with the code as well, of having with these building blocks, that there's very specific community engagement that occurs, there's very specific feedback that occurs, and kind of a milestone deliverable. One of the other thoughts that we've been having is, as we finish each of these building blocks, putting out that code and starting to use that portion of the code. So it's kind of a working, a working code where we start to apply development applications using the new code.
We have a, you know, some new members of the council, or I know that it seems like what you've said and from others, that staff is all in. Is council all in? Are we ready to rock and roll here?
We'll have clarification tomorrow.
Okay.
But yes, it has.
Come back.
It has been very clearly communicated to all of council members, new and existing, that this is our primary focus, at least for community development for the next two years.
Is, tomorrow's meeting a study session with council?
That is correct.
Is it, is that just one item, or is that the, the whole, the whole study session?
I think we have a couple of items.
There's some.
Minor.
There's a couple of other minor things on the agenda, but the focus is on getting council.
I know that planning commissioners have nothing else to do, but it might be, might be interesting to show up tomorrow and, or at least watch it on TV. Uh-oh, I've got a dinner tomorrow, so I can't come.
Hit that record.
Here, here, my place. Okay.
So really, yeah, and again, tomorrow's focus is on really downtown and some things that we as staff have taken the code and the comp plan and really kind of laid it on top of each other, and identified some, some areas where we could have some potential challenges.
Interesting. You're, you're, you're zeroing in on downtown when we still don't have a, a understanding of the entire zoning code rewrite process. Maybe a little ahead of the game here.
And I would say I think staff has identified that particular areas having the most change at this point in time.
David, you had something?
No.
Anyone else?
So are we supposed to be approving having study sessions? I'm, I'm, no?
I'm not necessarily. I, I was really just putting it out there, if that's something that you think would work for your schedules, number one, and if you would want to do it on a consistent basis or just once a month, or if we want to just keep to when we don't have an actual agenda, we have a study session.
I could see us doing, you know, once-a-month update. I don't know if we'd have to do it every meeting, but, but also backed up by, you know, loads of paperwork here. You know, we've had, it's our first meeting since the comp plan was approved and, by us, and then, so it's been quite a while, so I think we're all rested. I'm ready to get back into it. It's been, it was an exciting.
Okay.
Yeah. No, it was an exciting 18 months. I always tell the story, 18 months ago, when I was moaning to the previous community development director that we really didn't have much to do, this was before our breakfast meeting, she gave me this sly smile and said, just wait a little while, and, and it was announced that, at that breakfast meeting, that we were going through an intense 18-month period to redo the comp plan and the transportation master plan. So, so it, and we, I commend the planning commission for all the work that they put in and staff put in, and we did it, so we can do it again. Let's go.
You absolutely can. Okay, so that, Wendy, you wanted me to remind me, we did not schedule you to have a meeting on the 23rd of December. Merry Christmas. So you will not have a regularly scheduled meeting on the 23rd, so we will pick up in January. And I don't, I don't even know if we have anything on the agenda right now.
I don't think we do.
So we can definitely plan on that. We will plan on meeting at a regular time, not an early study session. I think we'll, it sounds like we'll save those for when we start to really get into the weeds and really need to be having conversations and engaging the public in that conversation as well.
Sound good?
I'll also send out an email to remind you that there's no meeting on the 23rd.
No meeting on the 26th. Any commissioner comments? I've made my comments. Let's go on the, on the zoning code. If there are no other comments, we're adjourned. Thank you.